Okay, so we are in recess from executive session. It would be convening back into open session. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You have roll call, please.
Erin Earl, here.
Robert Case.
Here.
Jennifer Lima, here.
Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Joshua Fertado.
Sadie McKeon.
Okay, and the calendar, please.
November 19th, 5:30 PM, DEI Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. November 24th, 5 PM, Policy Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. December 1st, 4:30, Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. December 2nd, 5 o'clock, Redistricting Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. December 3rd, 6 PM, Building Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. December 9th, 4:30, Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, Central Admin Conference Room. Business meetings, December 15th, special meeting, 5:45, The Town Chambers, 80 Boston Neck Road. December 15th, 6:30 PM, Joint Meeting with Town regarding the FY '27 budget, Town Chambers, 80 Boston Neck Road. December 16th, 6 PM, Regular Business Meeting, Central Admin Conference Room. School Committee Office Hours, November 19th, 7 PM, Central Admin Conference Room.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Citizens' Comments.
Oh, there's no Citizens' Comments, I'm sorry.
No worries. Okay, so if anyone is here for Citizens' Comments, you can just sign up, but if not, we'll move on to the next item. Okay, Superintendent Review?
Report.
Sorry, yep.
A few items here to share. First, just want to recognize Stony Lane Elementary School and some of the work that they're doing in bringing forward our vision of the learner. So for their school store, they have been working with their fourth grade students as coming in and helping out at the store. And part of that, they are working on some of the skills of the VOL, which is communicating to express themselves, collaborating to connect with others, analyzing to think critically in real world experiences, which is handling the transactions and working with their students and the kinds that help out to run that store. So those are just some of the ways of really kind of taking the skills of the VOL and putting it into what we're doing at the schools. Also, Stony Lane is a Feinstein Junior Scholar School, and they've been participating with community involvement, supporting the food bank and collecting food for the bank. They also have applied for a Feinstein grant, which we will find out if they receive it or not. Davison Middle School at DMS, the community, including students, teachers, and staff, parents, and friends, raised $875 in support of the disabled American veterans and the field of flags. Flags were donated as well for Veterans Day, which they put out in front of the school. At the high school, some good news, I'm kind of giving you a heads up on, and you'll see this at a next school community agenda. We applied for the Champlin Grant, and the purpose of applying for the Champlin Grant was to get additional funding for the machinist program. So we are thrilled to announce that North Kingstown High School has been awarded a generous $100,000 grant from the Champlin Foundation. This significant funding is a major investment in our students' futures and is specifically dedicated to enhancing our new machinist defense career education program. This program is a cornerstone of our commitment to career readiness built through a strategic partnership with industry leader Electric Boat and the Community College of Rhode Island. The grant will supplement the existing support from Electric Boat and the school district, allowing us to acquire cutting-edge equipment and resources. As a representative from the school has noted, the impact of this program aligns directly with our local economic needs. And this is a quote that's going in the article that they're putting out. In our backyard at Quonset Point, Electric Boat employs more than 7,000 skilled workers and continues to hire thousands more each year across Rhode Island and Connecticut to meet the demand of the submarine shipbuilding. With this grant, we will be able to strengthen each student's skill set, enabling them to become more qualified and competitive candidates for well-paying careers within our local community. This award underscores the strong connection between our schools and local industry, ensuring our graduates are prepared for immediate essential roles. And it enables us to provide the hands-on training our students need to meet the crucial demand for skilled machinists. We extend our deepest gratitude to the Champlin Foundation for their belief in our students and our program, and their partnership is invaluable as we prepare the next generation of highly skilled professionals. I want to note to that, through this process, we were told that they had many applicants, and they were unsure of how they were going to fund programs. So they wanted to make sure that their funding went to programs that were supporting students that might not be, their needs might not be met in other ways. And we weren't guaranteed that we would get the full amount of $100,000. And after they reviewed the applications and really looked at our program of how we're serving students that may not get support or education in other areas, they gave us the full amount. So that's really impressive, and we're really proud of that and appreciative of that. And as, you know, with our policies, that'll be on the next agenda to just have it approved by all of you, but just as a note, like when you have to fill out grants, sometimes getting those grants in don't always line up with a school community meeting, so we always, if we receive it, we then bring it forward to you. So we're really excited to have that, and that's going to allow us to get another machine, which also puts us ahead of our goal, which we set of having a program fully up and running in three years. We're actually going to meet that prior to that. And when we had the open house, we had many, many, many students and families come through that program, showing interest for the future. This year's accountability results highlight several district-wide strengths: strong overall LEA performance, high achievement in English Language Arts, a statistically significant increase on our graduation rate from 2023 to 2024, post-secondary success for our graduates, improvement in both student and teacher chronic absenteeism, low suspension rates, and schools exceeding expectations in ELA and math. And just to note, the star rating, it's a rating out of five, but the way that they do the accountability, your school is rated based on the lowest star rating you get into the categories. We're really proud of our schools this year. All of our schools are either three stars or above. Hamilton is a five-star school this year. They increased by two stars. Fish and Cove is a four-star school. They maintained where they were. Forest Park is a four-star school. They increased by one star from last year. Cunessett Elementary School is a three-star school. They maintained where they were last year. Stony Lane went from a five-star to a four-star. It's sometimes it's hard to keep up at that five-star level, but we're definitely going to be looking at, you know, how we can keep those schools that are at five stars at five and look at all of our other schools as well. Davison Middle School went from a two-star school to a three-star school. They increased by one. Wicked Middle School is a three-star school. They dropped by one star from last year. And North Kingstown High School is a four-star school, maintaining where they were. So we have really, really good, making good progress in our schools. Obviously, they always work when I look at that. We're going to give a brief presentation at the next meeting, just kind of go over the ratings of all of the, of the schools and how they're doing. But these ratings are a reflection of the hard work and dedication of our entire school community, and we extend our sincere appreciation to our students for their effort and perseverance, and to our teachers and staff for their professionalism and commitment to excellence, and to our families for their partnership and continued support. And we will use these ratings to dig in deeper, but we really just want to congratulate our schools and students and staff at this time. One more announcement from the high school. One of our high school students, Addison Love, Representative at High School, Middletown High School, for Operation Holiday Cheer. This was through our community service program that we have at the high school, it's led by Mrs. Mason. Addison was able to interact with her peers and also meet the Lieutenant Governor. She represented all of the North Kingstown High School students who took the time to make cards for our veterans, both here and at the VA Hospital and those serving overseas in Eastern Europe. This year, our students made over 180 cards, and it was a true testament to the caring nature of our students at the high school. And we're proud of the work that they're doing and she's doing, that they're able to kind of spread that joy with our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to routine items, we're going to skip executive session A, as we're going to return to executive session at the end of the meeting, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. And can I, before we make a motion to approve the consent agenda, does anyone want to exempt anything from it?
D two, please.
D two, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus D two?
So moved.
Greg.
Okay, all's in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. All's in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then can I get a motion for D two, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I just wanted to, on the cover sheet with D two, it references a flat fee. I just wanted to clarify that based on the packet, it is a flat fee, but there's also additional billing for any additional work as requested, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So I just, the cover sheet is just a little misleading in that, in terms of the financial impact.
Any other discussion regarding this item? Okay, we're in a motion to approve, so hearing no discussion, we'll call the question all's in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to reports. The first one on the agenda is special reports, so can Brad enroll in the report?
So you have the enrollment report from this year. We also sent you last year's report as a comparison. We have to have enrollment reports completed October one of every year, and our reports are sent to R I D. It goes over, it's a snapshot in time, looking at who we have in our buildings at that time, and those enrollment reports are submitted. So you have that. Any questions regarding this year's enrollment?
I just had, I had a couple comments. Thank you for answering the questions that I emailed to you. The one thing I wanted to comment on was that you can really see the increase in C T E students from two thousand and twenty-three to now. The other thing I noticed was that the G U D students has gone down. Is that an accurate tracking?
Yes, that's all based on what we're reporting to the state.
Okay, and the free and reduced lunch number has gone up as well. I just wanted to point that out. Were you able to get any additional information on the Kenny Vento students that?
I don't have that for tonight. I did look into it, but not information that I would have regularly available to share.
All right, if you could just follow up on that, I would appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
So I had a few things as well. Going on from what Jen just said about the F R L population, it seems like that there are about sixty-three more kids at D M S than two years ago, because I didn't get a chance to look over what was just added the last year to this year comparison, since that just came in. So, but first of all, the population went up, sixty-three kids, but did not reduce that much from Wickford Middle, so that was kind of an interesting, like, where did those students come from? It seems like a great deal of students, but also a majority of those students are over at D M S, F R L kids. And I'm not sure if that, I did try to look it up, kind of got some conflicting information, if that was a result of the guidelines being, the threshold being lower or raised, I suppose, or lower. In other words, why are there significantly, it just seems something to be like, that we need to look at.
From one school to another school?
Specifically at D M S, I think out of the sixty-three kids, there were, it was like fifty-four or something of those sixty-three are F R L kids. You know, just something to look at, because we're almost getting to that threshold at D M S of being a Title One school. I think we're at like thirty-six-ish, thirty-seven percent. So the enrollment is stable in elementary schools, but for some reason, I don't know, it's just an interesting number to me. I just had a lot of questions on that. Fishing Cove is also at about thirty-five percent F R L. I think, if I recall, there might be, I don't know if they're the school that's like kind of a Title One school, partial Title One.
Right, so we have a, you could be a title school, and then you could be a like title targeted school. And who should build this target?
And then I think there's some talk about possibly raising, federally raising the threshold to sixty percent. So that would be interesting too, if that came about, because that would also mean that Q I D's numbers, which are at fifty-eight percent F R L, are for Title Ones, or for Title One, wouldn't be, none of our schools would end up being. So that's just something to keep an eye on in case the F R L guidelines change, which I'm sure you are all doing. And then the other thing I thought was interesting is that twice as many males as females had I E Ps. I don't remember exactly which schools, I didn't write it down here, but it just, just things that I assume that you all keep an eye on. This is my, given that this is my first time on the school committee with this census coming out, I'm not exactly sure how you keep track of all this stuff and how you report back or you report out, but these are some really interesting trends that I hadn't seen from previous years going into the next year.
Questions you have or things you know, I mean, like I E Ps, I mean, that's very strictly, there's evaluations, a process that's followed of how students are qualified.
Yeah, I think it probably just speaks to, you know, something I always refer back to is just the male versus female. You know, are we, you know, how much are we putting into looking into, you know, how males and females are, you know, learning differently or achieving differently in our schools? Because it's not, it's something that I think Rob and I talked about this last time when you were presenting the R I C A S scores. You know, we like to keep, keep track of the data between male versus female. So the I E P thing was interesting to me as well, but also just the F R L numbers. I don't know if the threshold was changed, and just something to keep an eye on federally, because if that number gets raised, that percentage gets raised, that could have significant influence in our schools.
Thank you. Other questions or comments regarding the enrollment report? Okay. Next one, Ken?
Report of Assignment of Student Policy.
So the next report you have goes along with the policy for assignment of students that's looking at involuntary and voluntary transfers. So what you have is a breakdown at the elementary school level of how many transfers we had in and out of those schools. Based on involuntary transfer versus the voluntary transfers in and out of each school. And this is just a report, few of this information only. So you can just kind of see for this school year, how many transfers that we had out of each school, where they went, if they were transfers based on parent requests. Involuntary transfer would be made because we had schools where grade levels were at cap, when we had to transfer to other schools, or special education transfers. What that represents are where our district programs are. And so transfers in is because there's a district program at the school, transfer out is because a student had to leave their home school to go to, excuse me, to go to that district program.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding this?
I had a couple. The current enrollment number at the bottom of each of these pages, I couldn't tie that math out from the rows above. Can you just walk me through where that came from?
Yeah, so if you look at a, just pull up one of the schools, the current enrollment, that's how many students are at that school in that grade level, and then the cap is below.
But like, did it come from the rows above?
Nope, no, so that is how many students we have. So the rows above are just the kids that are going in and out, okay?
Shouldn't it equal the current enrollment?
Should it equal the, should those rows equal?
Like, shouldn't home students plus students in and out equal the current enrollment?
Yes.
So if you, I'm looking at the formulas, there's formulas that are in there already. So like the current enrollment number.
Like, just take the first school of Hamilton, right, and just take the kindergarten column?
Yeah.
And start with home students at fifty-seven, and then add the ins and outs. Shouldn't you leave?
Yes, the math, just that current enrollment line should equal what's above it.
Yeah, so there, so this, this form here had the calculations already in it. So that home student number is not added. So that home student number is fifty-seven, right? That's how many students are there, there's fifty-seven. The current enrollment is fifty-seven. What's being added in there, if you look at it, is rows J, so under column J, it's row.
Well, we can't see the columns because it's a current out.
Yeah, that's true. So it's bringing in.
Bring in home students?
Home students, it's bringing in special transfers in, it's bringing in voluntary transfers in, and it's bringing in involuntary transfers in.
So it's not taking any transfers out? Because wouldn't home students and current enrollment be the same number?
It shouldn't be.
I, this is not my spreadsheet, nor my formulas over there, so I.
Can you confirm, because it just seems that current enrollment should be the starting number plus the ins and the outs? Should end with current enrollment, so if you could just confirm that.
Okay, so we'll follow up and confirm that.
And then my other question was, if you look at all the transfers in and out, you can see that most of the transfers in and out have to do with kindergarten, and it's been that way like for the past few years. And I guess my question is, do you foresee that continuing, like, you continue to see? Like, is that a question that the registering?
So that, that is what we're looking at as, as the registering, right? Especially at that school, right? Looking at the number of students and how many we have and them out of seats that we have available at the school.
Well, it's been all the schools, like Hamilton and.
Forest Park, I think.
And Forest Park, and then looks like they've gone in. But then my other question was, Q I D is the school that has the most voluntary transfers out? And do you know why that is? The biggest chunk of them have come out of fifth grade, but wondering if there's a way to find out what the reason is for that.
Yeah, I.
Anecdotally, with absolutely no basis of this, fifth grade was the COVID kindergartners. And so like the kindergartners that went in when, in twenty twenty?
Okay.
So I, not that, there could be absolutely no correlation with that, but that could be something maybe.
Okay. Those are my only questions.
Yeah, I mean, I have notes here, like, as far as like those volunteer transfers out, like what schools they were transferred to and who they are. But I mean, that is the heavier number, and I think if I remember going back, those students in previous years were not there either, right? So just because this shows that there were six students that transferred out of Cunesset for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, doesn't mean it happened this year. Like, if you go and you look, that if we were to track it back, some of them were not there the year before.
Transferring out each prior year, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying like they could have transferred out with their kindergarten, because they want to be in the classroom.
Those were requests that happens year after year.
Yeah. But yeah, if you can just check that spreadsheet, please, to find out what the math is, that would be great.
Any other questions regarding this? Okay, thank you. Moving on to financial reports. Any questions regarding the financial reports?
Not a question so much, but just kind of a comment. One thing that's difficult, and I'm not sure of the solution on it, is sometimes there's like larger purchases on the check registry or something like that, and it's not super clear what it's for. So not for everything, but is there a way that for like maybe purchases over twenty thousand or something that we could, if it's not like very clear, like sometimes you can very easily look and you're like, oh, that's curriculum, or oh, that's a school. But like there's some that it's hard to tell what the things are. There's a way to get it to tie to something or a memo or something, but like there's some ones that I'm always like, oh, I wonder what that is, and I feel like I could be better informed on it, does that make sense?
Or maybe is there a way to like, this is a pay and say so, like sort them by like.
My glory or something.
Line. And then by, you know what I mean, like?
Ken, do you want to?
Yeah, if you.
And I don't want to make more work, I just like, I also try to make educated decisions though, so.
So what is the act, or what are you asking, like over a certain amount, that there's an explanation of?
Well, is there like, you mean, is there a column on this thing that isn't added into the?
To like, for example.
That says what every, like, what was purchased.
Yeah, yeah, so like, for example, I don't know what Brooks Associates is, right? Like, it just isn't a random example, but then those are two big numbers. But then, like, I scroll down and I see a big number, but it's like the Sergeant Rehab Center. So in my brain, I can go, oh, I know what that is, or it's a school or something. But like, there's a couple that are like big that I don't know what they are tied to. So any thoughts on how we can?
I can certainly put comments, that's not a problem. I can't do it by account number or budget number, because most, so many of our payments have multiple budget lines. So, so it's coming out of a whole different place, and there's no easy way to sort that, nor is there a way for it to pull with the way that I pull the check register. So that check register is kind of a little bit of a wonky report. So there's really no way to do that, but I, in almost all instances, can eyeball it and know exactly what some of those outliers are and can certainly put comments.
And again, I don't.
Or memo or something.
Sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I can do a memo, or I can do, I'll look at it and just try it for next month to see what makes the most sense and what I think is the most efficient, if that's okay. And if that works, let me know, and if not, I'll keep working on it.
Oh, perfect, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments regarding the three reports?
Yeah, I don't want to waste time, but I do have a bunch of questions, so on the check register, so can I just send them to you? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on those? Okay, thank you. And then moving on to the advisory subcommittee reports. I do not have a report from C E L E C, because I was not able to attend, but I will reach out to Rachel and get that for the next meeting, because I know that they were, they did meet last week, so I'll make sure to get that for our next meeting. So we'll skip on that, and then can we go to building advisory?
Sure. So at the last building advisory, we had updates regarding our middle school design and the capital improvement projects, and we also spent a good amount of time going, looking at the commissioning agent's recommendation. Presentations and video are all online.
Any questions regarding that report? Okay, moving on to unfinished business, we're going to skip A for now. Can I get a motion for B?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
How much are we allowed to talk about this, Andrew?
As far as?
I, I.
The council.
Yeah, I was thinking about this, and I was wondering, do we definitely have, are we definitely involved in this?
Yeah, every district's going to be involved in it in some way, shape, or form, depending on where the, where they land on what that actual C T E tuition looks like. But you guys are certainly named, you are a part of, you have a robust C T E program, so I would assume, again, I haven't delved much into this because of all the conflicts, but I would assume you're going to be involved in it probably more so than most.
So two of my questions then from that are, the first question is, if we approve this this evening and approve legal counsel, right? We immediately, any conversations that flow from this, we're automatically starting to get billed, correct?
With Mr. Seawell?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Before we really even know a lot about it, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would assume would happen is, is he'll probably reach out to Dr. Duva. I'm guessing, based on the nature of the complaint, and we've already talked about this, is you're going to start to run some numbers internally, like how many kids did we have from Warwick? What is that, you know, in the years in question, what does that look like, what's the spread, and kind of calculate your numbers. And then, like I said, one of the things that we had suggested Jeff Forrest, because he's doing five or six of you guys, so hopefully he'll do what we do, and you know, if he has to go to a hearing at R I D, he'll split that by five or six different districts, as opposed to giving you someone different for each and every, every piece. But yeah, to answer the fundamental answer to your question is, yeah, as you ask him questions about that case, depending on how he bills, that's, he's your lawyer for this case now.
Okay, and then hopefully, if we end up being successful, is there, would we be able to put in for reimbursement? You know what I mean?
For legal fees?
For legal fees?
No, at R I D, the only, the only mechanism there is at R I D for getting legal fees is you have to, you have to reach a, or come below a certain income threshold, which doesn't apply to districts, unfortunately, so no.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Um, okay, so we're in a motion, I believe, to approve?
Correct.
All right. Um, hearing no other discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving, engaging in conflict counsel for work schools v. Barrington, for RIDE litigation? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, moving on to C. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to discuss?
Second.
Ken, you were gonna revise goal three to have the specific baseline for the SEL with the percentage?
So I have that.
Okay.
I realized earlier today that I never put that on there for you. So what that is, I, I have it here. Um, so we are looking to increase SEL favorability by nine percent. That's based on data from the spring of twenty-three school year from those survey works when we had written the strategic plan. And at the time, school belonging had a favorability percentage of sixty-one percent in grades three through five and twenty-seven percent in grades six through twelve. Um, we are looking to continue to increase that. And currently, I look at it as a comparison of where we are now. Um, our last report in the spring, um, in grades three through five, we went from sixty-one percent to sixty-six. So we're moving in that direction of increasing it to, uh, by nine percent. And in grade six through twelve, we went from twenty-seven percent to thirty-eight percent. So we are, we're moving in the right direction of increasing favorability of school belonging, um, for that goal of increasing it by nine percent, uh, by the end of, well, for the, the report that will come out in the spring of this school year.
Okay, can you have that updated and added?
Yeah, I have it already on the else on the two.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna be changing, um, under goal three, under indicators for success.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's putting in what the.
Yeah, so it'll still be a nine percent increase, um, but is that nine percent increase this year?
Nope, it's nine percent from twenty. So what we're saying is we're increased by nine percent from twenty-three to twenty-six.
Yep, so this is a this year goal sheet, though. So we need to indicate what the percentage for this year would be based off of what you know from that. So like, if you, and I didn't get all the numbers as you were saying them, but.
So basically, what, what, what we're looking at, right? So is an increase of four percent for this year in grades three through five. And, um, we've already met the nine percent goal in grades three through twelve. We just need, it's just, we need to maintain it, so.
So the correct way that we would be writing it is to, like, get to nine percent, we need to see four percent for K through five and maintain for six through twelve?
Yeah, and so the, what I have is a little, some bullets under there. So I'll resend it to you from the document that I have.
Okay. Other questions regarding the goals?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Um, wait, I wasn't.
Nope. Uh, you weren't done talking?
No, I was gonna talk, but I was checking to see if you all need to talk.
Oh, sorry.
No worries. Um, so Ken, I said, I had sent you a couple of questions earlier, so I didn't know if you wanted to, um.
Yep, my question under goal, uh.
Under goal two, about like, the action item for the disproportionate discipline? Like, there was a goal for it, but there was no, like, how we were going to do that?
Yep, and so what I, I didn't hear what we're doing is, uh, school level teams will be reviewing chronic absentees and data monthly, meeting with the impacted students and their families, and providing support to them to improve, improve attendance as the action steps.
All right, so that will be in, if we approve? And then?
And then you also had a question on goal four. And I had a typo where it said pilot learning progressions aligned to, no, I'm sorry, it was.
Student-led professional learning.
Yes, thank you. Under the action steps, student-led professional learning with all staff and VOL, V O L conferences. That should say by November of twenty-five, not twenty-six. That was a typo on my part. And then the other one was with, under goal five, for the, um, redistricting. I had in there the entire, like, I wrote it as, like, what, when that will be completed. So the overall, all goal for the redistricting, school start times and transportation is to have a recommendation to the school committee by March of twenty-twenty-seven. I will add in there, um, just kind of like the specifics of what that work would be from now until June. I have the timeline in there. Um, there's a, uh, printout of, I know it's really small, but that was, uh, the timeline of what work's gonna be happening from December through then. Um, but I will specify underneath that, where it says, to the committee by March of twenty-seven, like, the full completion, but what will be completed by June of twenty-twenty-six. I'll add a bullet under there, basically taking what's in the, that little Gantt chart under, under the action steps.
Okay, thank you. And then there was just one other question I had, which was the, um, there was a bullet under goal two that said, um, provide implicit bias training, um, but it wasn't clear on to whom.
So that's to staff.
So, um, that was one. And then the last question I had was about, um, it said strengthen family engagement through advisory groups, community forums, and elevate student and family voice and provide multilingual communications, which I think is a nice bullet, but there was not a really easy way to quantify it. Like, like, so I wasn't sure if we wanted, like, more specification on that one or maybe narrow the focus? Like, 'cause if, if there's nothing, then you would just be like, you'd have to do each one at least once, which is fine, if that's your intent. I just wanted to clarify what success would look like for you.
Yeah, no, I can, um, I can add to that, that action step.
Thank you.
So based on all those changes, I'm gonna withdraw my motion to approve and wait till we get an updated version? Because that's a lot of changes to make on the fly.
I think that's fine. Is that okay with you, Ken? Please, push it one more way. Um, and I did apologize again, I sent my, you know, I accept my questions, like, 'cause I was late, but, um, I appreciate you getting, uh, them back to me. Okay, so we're in a motion to discuss. Any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll move on, um, to D. Um, so the state legislative conversation. Um, so this is a conversation for the school committee to have, um, on kind of how we want to go in and any things that we want to bring up with the state legislative body when we're meeting with them at the town council. Um, so can I get a motion to discuss?
Make a motion to discuss?
Second.
Um, so just wanted to see if the school committee had any, um, thoughts on things that we might want to approach with them, um, that impacts North Kingstown. So again, these would be things that happen up at the legislative level, but that are important to us in North Kingstown. So wanted to see if the committee had any initial ideas.
I have a few.
Sure.
Um, I wanted to re-put forward the, um, bills that Senator Valverde had put forward about, uh, requiring the names of any non-credentialed school employee who's terminated for good and just cause to be furnished to the Department of Education. We put forth a resolution in support of that bill last year. Also, the one that would allow dismissal of a teacher after the March first deadline if there's gross misconduct by a teacher upon a student. Also, a bill that, uh, Lieutenant Casnero had put through a few years ago that I don't believe ever got passed, uh, for the Alicia Barrows Berefin Act. Again, a vote for universal lunch. Some of the other ones that we've talked about with them, um, in prior years. Statewide parental leave for teachers and support staff. We have that in our contract currently, but, um, just to advocate for that statewide. Teacher recruitment and retention, that's a statewide issue, it's also an issue here. Funding for mental health first day training. And training, uh, school personnel on the availability and use of extreme risk laws.
Sorry, I got ninety percent of it except for that last sentence.
Uh, training school personnel on the availability and use of extreme risk laws. Like the red flag laws.
Extreme risk laws.
Extreme, thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, between the cold and the mask. And also flexible bus service in North Kingstown, like they do, like they have in AmeriGansett area.
Okay. Um, any thoughts from the committee on that list or anything else that we want to add? Again, it doesn't have to be, it's just, there's, I think, different ways that we can approach it. Individuals can put forward things, or if the committee as a whole is, like, very passionate about one or two, we can put them forward as the committee. So there's different ways kind of to approach the conversation, I feel. Or, and there, also, if there's others that people think are important at the state level? Or anything Dr. Duvva or Rob, anything that you particularly want us to look at or push? I think we meet, do we meet one more time or no?
Yeah, we meet the second.
Yeah, so we have one more meeting, and so if others have any other thoughts or anything, um, is there any, we read them, so there was the laws of non-credentialed employees being tracked, um, at RIDE if there's, um, issues. The Bereavement Act, um, that came out of North Kingstown's district. Universal lunch, statewide parental leave, um, teacher recruitment and retention, mental health, um, the extreme risk laws, and then the flexible bus service. Okay, we'll circle back.
When did you say we met?
Yeah, we don't have a meeting on the second.
Our next meeting is the sixteen. Well, that's weird, I have it in my folder on the second.
Because we have a redistricting meeting on the second, so, and we don't have it on this calendar.
Well, glad you said that, because I would.
Okay, so we will not see each other again. So does anyone have any thoughts on the list or things that they particularly think we should provide some information to the state representatives on?
Nope.
Okay, we can move on. School budget, um, can I get a motion for that one, please?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
So we have a calendar in front of us for the, um, fiscal year twenty-seven budget calendar. Any questions, thoughts, comments on this? This does not need to be approved. This is just a document presented to us on the timeline of how the budget will get rolled out to us. So it's more just FYI slash comments.
So last year and the year before, we had four budget meetings, and this proposal only has three. So I didn't know whether we wanted to factor in one more. And then my other question was, this thing that we got said that by eleven-five, we were supposed to have a three-year revenue projection, and I don't think we got that.
You don't? That's still being worked on with the school in town. Um, so they, the school, so Leslie and, um, our town planists are here, working on, actively working on that.
Okay.
But as soon as it's done, we will present it.
Okay.
But by law, it is November first.
Okay.
Just, we're together, both entities are putting that together.
So I'll note that for follow-up?
Will you have it by December?
Oh, yeah.
Our next meeting, so we'll.
It's almost there. I didn't do it last year, this is the first year, so it took me a little bit longer.
Yeah, I actually don't know if I ever remember seeing one. I saw that and I was like, oh, that's neat, okay.
Honestly, I've never.
I'm going to R I G L sixteen two twenty-one dot two. We need you, so, great.
So we will, we, the goal is to have that to you at the December fifteenth meeting.
Okay, why don't we adjust this document, then, to reflect that so that we're not already behind?
Yeah, we, we, we just, yeah, we had to just buy a lot of the time, as opposed to, but.
Got you.
We can put that on there as something that will be there for you.
Great. Other questions regarding this? Um, to Jen's point, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, we had added another school committee meeting to be able to have the same amount of budget meetings?
I thought we did too.
I mean, I'm here for doing a more mission.
Because I remember discussing that when we made.
No, so we're meeting on December second, so here we are.
Yeah, maybe you shouldn't trust me for meetings. I see one on the thirteenth to twentieth.
In the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
I, there was a, there's another meeting that we did have that I had in my notes as an as needed. So it is scheduled and we have it, but that was perhaps wishful thinking on my part that we could do it and not need that last meeting, but I can certainly.
It's after the eleventh, is that what? So there's February.
And we actually have one, two, three, we have five meetings in a row. Oh, so maybe we have them and they're just not listed on here.
Yes, there are meetings, there are meetings. I listed the ones that were definitive budget meetings. And then there, I had one as a note that would be an as needed if we needed to add it, but I didn't include it on there. Again, wishful thinking.
I'm here for the wishful thinking, but we do have a backup built in.
Yeah, and luckily we have them on the thirteenth, the twentieth, the twenty-seventh.
The third, the tenth.
And the tenth. So we have them.
Right up to February.
What tenth?
February.
February tenth.
February tenth.
All right, is it listed as the eleventh on this document?
I might have had it in my notes as the eleventh. I will go back.
Tuesday, the eleventh, you're right, it would be Tuesday.
Yeah, the season's set at ten.
Yep. They should say the tenth.
Okay, I apologize.
But then we also have a meeting on, yeah, the tenth.
Yep.
Oh, you know what? Is it, say the tenth, does that say budget meeting? Did we have a budget meeting on the tenth?
It says budget approval on the eleventh.
It says budget approval on the tenth.
Okay, so.
On the eleventh.
Well, the eleventh, which you.
Yes, it's a typo, that's okay.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, so we're covered, then, okay.
And we're, we're confident in the timelines with the town? We've, we've got, like, we've.
Our, so our, our calendar matches their calendar. So, so, um, they provided us once they finalized it, and then I built ours based on that.
Perfect, that is what I was hoping for. All right, any other questions regarding this? And then do we have, I see the budget and finance committee meeting that we worked in. Some of them are really tight time turnarounds, so that does make me a little bit nervous as far as, like, the school committee being able to digest or get any attachments from that committee? Like, if we're, you all are meeting on the second and then we're meeting on the third? Just something to consider.
Okay, I'll go back.
It's better than the fourth. Like, you know what I mean? Like, I see the rationale, but like, when thinking about if there's something that.
Yeah, I think we were looking at, see if we could, there was a reason why we didn't have that the week before, though.
It's okay. I'm sure there's a reason, I just wanted to note it. Because if it, there is this one, maybe.
For which date I.
So February sec, so, so we have a, on February second, we have budget and finance. The week before, there was something, I thought there was a conflict with China.
You all can look at it offline, and if it's possible, I would move it, but if not, just leave it.
Yeah, there's policy on that day. The week, the Monday before is policy, so that's why we do not have that there.
Okay, any other questions regarding the budget?
Probably the holiday. Bellas.
Are we good? Okay. Got it. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Ken. I assumed there was a reason, but. Yep, so can I get a motion for F, please?
Make a motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Duvva, anything, do you want to add on this one? We have a, we're on the, um, update on, uh, update motion for budget.
So essentially, and I provided the memo just to try and give as much background as possible, but essentially, um, we were tasked with talking about the reappraisal that we used in fiscal twenty-six, um, to balance the budget, and what were our expectations for twenty-seven, and to get information to provide some backup as to how we would offset that. Um, now that we're getting ready to close fiscal twenty-five, and we have an idea of kind of where, un-audited, where we're landing, we understand that we're gonna have a surplus that will help offset some of the things that were decided in fiscal twenty-six, and this was discussed with the budget and finance committee. Um, and then we also had discussions on expectations for fiscal twenty-seven. And, um, essentially, the intent is to come to our initial budget workshops, not using any reappraisal. And that is our goal. So, um, essentially, the budget and finance committee decided that that was kind of sufficient response and that no further action was needed, but it needed to come back to school committee to finalize that. So, um, if anyone has any questions, I don't know if Dr. Duvva wants to provide any other insight. If anyone has any questions?
I think the committee, like, brought the motion, and then we sort of, like, that's the answer back of what we were supposed to provide.
Okay.
Well, I agree we should.
I think, you know, the point we're only like.
To the school committee, because we had asked you to motion some, to look at something.
Yeah, all right, we will present you with an initial budget that does not have us making transfers out of the financials. That is what we will.
Okay. Do you need any action from us?
I mean, you just need to, I think, from here.
To discharge the action. To discharge the action.
Direction to come up with the revenue to offset it, basically.
But don't we still need to figure that out?
No.
Okay, great. Okay, so I do it, so.
Is this something that if we need help with, we can, once we get into budget talks, we can bring back and ask the Budget and Finance Committee to look at things for us? I guess.
Because the Budget and Finance Committee has kicked it to the school committee.
Okay, I guess I am, I've been very confused with the Budget and Finance Committee because I feel as if a lot of decisions are being made first here or without them. And it's almost like they're an afterthought, which I would like to see kind of the opposite. I just don't feel like we're getting much input from them, that I think that they have a lot of professionals on there who could give us some good advice and give us some good guidance. And that's kind of the whole purpose of it, I'm just.
So when we put that committee together, it was to focus around on, on us creating our budget. So we built the calendar so that we were bringing our budget recommendations to the Budget and Finance to review and then come to school committee. So that's the way we had set up the timeline moving forward.
Yeah, I, sometimes I just feel like they're not as much of an advisory committee as some of our other advisory committees. Like I feel like we wouldn't dare do policies without going first through the policy committee. We wouldn't dare do recommendations for, from other committees, redistricting, without going through redistricting. And sometimes with budget, it's kind of like, have we run this by the Budget and Finance Committee? Well, no, yes. So that's just my view of it, how I've seen it. And I mean, I'm just kind of like, are we in, are we out? Is there a purpose to that committee?
Well, the purpose of the committee was to be put together so they were about to, to advise us on our creation of our budgets, right? And so that is what we are doing moving forward. So we haven't started the budget process yet, we shared the, the calendar with you tonight. We built in to make sure that our Budget and Finance meetings are happening prior to the budget presentations to the school committee. So that is the whole purpose of that.
And I think, I think because last year, the Budget and Finance Committee was.
It was started af.
Was started after the fact, so I kind of think that was why.
And then Oakland and.
It's been like that, or I think now we're being more proactive.
There were a lot of recommendations that were made over the spring as like to relook at things that were done in the past. So I think it was started, you know, when it was started, when it was put in, people were putting, you know, recommendations forward on that committee to relook at things that were already done.
Can somebody remind me what the prior request was exactly?
Um, I can tell you.
Because you were telling me.
I wrote it down, it was to update $750,000 in operational expenses and our revenue to replace the fund balance reappropriation in the FY '26 budget.
And so.
So that was like the original motion brought to the school committee that.
Yeah, so you all came to us and said, hey, charge us with this, right?
Yes, and now.
And then we charged you with it, but now you're saying you don't.
And that was back in the spring of last year.
Yeah, no, it's totally fine, I'm just trying to keep up.
And then when we finalized.
Well, we did, we provided an answer at the last meeting and they considered that sufficient.
Right, because what we, because what we provided.
A sufficient response, I guess.
Answer was that when we finished out the budget year, right, we had a surplus that went back into the fund balance. We basically replenished what we took out.
Okay, Sherry, can we get a motion to reverse whatever you just said?
Okay, so a motion to reverse the.
Or cancel, or I don't know what the legally word would be.
Legally, what would it be? Okay, a motion to withdraw update on the $750,000 in operational expenses and our revenue to replace the fund balance reappropriation to the FY '26 budget.
Per the recommendation of.
Per the recommendation of the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee.
Great, thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
All the, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, thank you, Leslie, to new business item, any, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, do you have anything on this?
Uh, Michelle, explain why that's on the agenda?
So it was brought to our attention that possibly we should look through and make sure that all of the bus drivers have been in prior years approved by the school committee. I went through, we couldn't find any of the, I couldn't find anything in writing, I couldn't find minutes on these drivers. So I decided that I should just bring everybody forward right now for approval.
So basically, after going through documents and stuff from past years, we couldn't, as the current administration.
Yep.
Write it, so we wanted to start off on a clean slate with us here and have everyone document that they've been approved by the school committee, the mission of, that, you know, what's our project policy.
They're in flag for their policy, yes. Questions from the committee?
So on the asset list, bus 14 has three drivers listed, so there's only two listed on here.
On the.
So Beverly French and Stephen West are listed for bus 14. But you're seeing what, Jen?
No, so I had, I had asked you when I sent you that email to, I think you should put their names, like Stephen West and Beverly French. Because I think you basically have like their first names and their last names. That's why I think you're confused, it looks like there's four people, it's not, it's just their first name and it's their last name.
Oh, it's not.
With slashes in between, so it looks confusing.
I got you, okay. French West.
So it's Stephen West, Beverly French, just how this looks like four.
Got you, okay. I see you, okay.
Yeah, can we just fix, let's, you can just fix that, let's take a fun.
Yeah.
And then my other question is, the substitute bus drivers that you have listed, do they drive any of the buses or do they drive particular buses?
They drive, a couple of them will drive any, so some of them work for particular contractors, but some of them will work for any of the contractors. So, but they basically do like field trips, athletics and field trips.
Okay.
So they're actually driving the spare buses.
Okay, and Andrew, you're going to fix the issue with the contract that we discussed.
We are, yep. Yeah, Michelle and I, we emailed a bunch today, we're going to sit down and really wrap our arms around all the documentation we have and get it all up to snuff.
So we're going to like have contracts for this, the spare buses too? That what you're talking about?
This, what I was asking about was for the co-contractor that he passed away.
Yes, that's, that's the only part that I was confused about on this one.
Oh, that too.
So let's, we'll deal with one bus issue at a time. Right now, you're being asked to do this part, which is the bus driver approval.
Yes.
So any other questions regarding that, because I do have one as well?
That was my question, is on this one.
Which one? Oh, so Jen, so there's four people that say substitute bus driver, I personally don't care what.
No, there's apparently only two, they're just listed weird, so that's all set.
Yeah, the bus 14, and I think, that's why I want to ask Ange, like, so this is kind of like our way, because I mean, it said it in the contract, so I'm kind of shocked that we have people driving buses that were not approved through the school committee.
After, after the process, with the agenda today, I think we're, we're going to actually pull every document that we have.
Okay.
With all the buses, go through the contract and line up and, and.
But do approving this will kind of make sure it kind of goes with the agreement.
Yeah, that, that, it's the perfect first step, absolutely.
That's why, yeah, that's why they're going.
That's what I'm saying, and it's not to say that they weren't approved, at some point, it's just that the, the current administration can find it, but we also are not going to spend 900 hours going back through minutes and different things.
You can't find.
No, no, I just think we need to be covered because God forbid one of these buses gets in an accident and the driver's not approved by us.
So declare, can we just clarify the asterisks and why we listed it like this? For this particular approval?
Well, so. So I was, yes, so I went back and forth because Christopher Morton should have been on the contract with Robert Morton. He was, a letter had come into our office in January of 2020 to put him onto the contract. So I went through everything, I asked Jules to help me, I asked Stephanie again tonight to see. I was told that it went in front of the school committee sometime in February, March 2020, well, February. I can't find anything, so I listed him as a driver to be approved, but he's technically a contractor. But I can't find anything appointing him, I found a letter from his father to add him to the contract to our department, and that's as far as I could find. So I wanted to make sure we were covered as approving him for a bus driver because he's technically not on.
Understood.
But that letter's not in the file.
I, I uploaded it when I found it.
Does it?
We had uploaded it.
I'm looking in the file right now, but it's not in, which file did you put it in?
You mean in the asset list?
Yeah, the bus 95.
You know, I didn't, I, because I just found this, but I sent it to Stephanie to add to the school committee, but I can scan it and put it in there.
For the purposes of this document, though, like regardless of if Chris is running bus 9 or Chris is a substitute driver or doing 14, it doesn't matter for this one. That other thing most certainly matters, we will rectify that, but for the approving bus drivers, all we're saying is that.
He can drive a bus, yeah.
So do we need, in this official memo, we'll just leave it, who cares? Any other questions regarding this? And I would assume all of these people have met are like employee compliance with VCI's and overrating and all the things.
Yeah, like are they all registered to with the Department of Transportation, drug and alcohol?
They have to, yes.
Okay.
They're all registered in DSA.
Proof of that.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding this list? Okay, hearing none, we'll make a, can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second, any discussion on this one? This is the approval of transportation upgrade. Okay, hearing no discussion, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Yep, everybody, right? Um, C, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one?
Um, as long as Andrew is going to address all the contract issues we discussed, I'm okay approving this, but.
Well, I guess that's the question, are we going to have contracts for the spare buses, because how are we transferring?
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Like ownership, if we don't even have that.
I think we need to have contracts for everything, I think we need to clarify the VIN numbers, I think we need to clarify the drivers versus the contractors. I think everything should be lined up by the time we're done, in a, in a, in a manner that you could say, bus A, here's the driver, here's the contractor, here's the extension, here's the termination, here's, whatever it is.
Yeah, and if they're not, like, if, if, if the contract is expiring and they're not going to renew it, we need to have something that says that.
I, I think we should document that instead of just letting them go off just something, yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
So how does it work? So if we, for example, bus S14 is currently titled to the North Kingstown School Department.
Correct, well.
So would.
Probably.
Well, it's currently classified as a spare bus, so wouldn't it be?
It should be, yep.
Do we have the VIN for that 14?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so when this, when they're, so when we are having it being purchased from one person to another, do we give it back to the original person?
It, no, because what we did, if you recall, that we, that was the first set of documents that we drafted up maybe three or four months ago. We called it, I think, a transfer of custodianship because it never technically leaves our possession, but.
But that one was getting like sunsetted, this one's getting purchased, and so I'm concerned about.
Purchased, no, no, they, they, it was, the other ones were getting purchased too, someone was buying the bus off somebody else, but the title was staying with the, with the district. So we acknowledged the, the transfer between, of, of custodianship between the two. And then we also acknowledged in that document that once the contract expired, who would we go back to? So that's what we, that's my suggestion to do going forward. And then I think to Jen's point, but if we're, if we have a bus that's actually no longer in service and going back to the person, that's when we actually need to make sure we're titling it, we're, we're titling it out of our names because we don't have it anymore, back to whoever that person is and then documenting that as well.
But do you know in the agreement, it actually says that we should, I've already been doing that. Like as soon as it ended, the contract ended, we should have titled it right back.
Yeah.
It actually states it in the agreement, so I don't know why that didn't happen.
Yeah, Sherry, it's, I mean, it's just, it's just a longstanding practice that seemed to have worked out okay, but there are, there are a lot of gaps, that's all. I don't think there's anyone necessarily at fault, I just think that we need to, we have an opportunity now to get everything together and clean it up.
Okay, so for the purpose of today, we're being asked to address S14, bus 15 and a different bus 14 that will now become S15. So any questions on that?
I have one more question, so that current spare bus that said, that spare 14, that 7832, that really needs a custodianship transfer, right?
Which one?
The one that's going, well, because from the Mumfords to Novak. And so that's not included in here, so really, it's, because it's just a thing that's saying, from the Mumford saying that Novak is going to assume all.
Yeah, I think what we've done is we've approved that and then we have a form that Kurt and his people have approved that we'll just kind of, I'll just put those together.
Okay.
Once it's approved by you folks, and we'll document it and have it in the file.
And that'll be cut out.
But that's, that's right, Jen, that's the form that we are, that's the one form we have created and we're good with it, yep.
But is it weird that we don't have an original contract with the spare bus? I mean, I get the other buses, how that works and makes sense.
It is what it is.
I guess, I don't get it, if we don't have one, how are we doing that with the spare bus?
Well, originally, the bus was owned by, was, I'm assuming still owned by us, and it went into a spare bus, but still probably titled to us. So we need to figure out where that, basically, we need to figure out who's, who's the, the custodian of that spare bus and where the spare bus is going to go once the agreement with us runs out. Right, those are our, those are our two concerns.
It, it's, it's not, the spare buses are not contracted to work for us. A driver will have a spare bus in the event their bus breaks down or for field trips, so it's not technically contracted, it's not getting a daily rate, it's not doing a home to school.
But who owns it?
Yeah, but we should solve something same.
Drivers, yes, something that, but it, the drivers own them.
No, 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 we do.
No, I think we do.
I know.
No title, I know they.
Correct, correct, yes, I know, I know.
Let's just talk about today's.
But I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
I guess what I'm saying is, bus 15, I feel like is easy, but is the spare bus without an agreement, does that make it difficult to, to give it to someone else? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yep, no, I think the custo, I, my, my, my knee-jerk reaction is that same transfer of custodianship, so just additional language will cover the, the spare bus situation.
So I think what we're being asked today, and I totally hear you on all of the points, Sherry, is just, are we okay with the transfers? And then as far as like what we're doing as far as paper trail and logistics like that could follow, so this is more like, yes, we're fine with 14 getting.
Transferred.
Transferred to Novak and then 15, the new one, and then the other one being transferred to a spare. So I think that's where we are right now, but then also there's a lot of, the, the legal document follow-up of that, we can make sure it happens.
I just need to say again that every time that we think we've straightened up this paperwork, we get a new doc in front of us and it's not. And it's driving me up a wall that this stuff is not straight. And I get that it's an inherited mess, but it, it needs to be cleaned up.
And that, and that's, I think, why, what we arrived at today was, I like, I'll, everything, and I'm going to have someone in my office go through and just categorize everything. And, and like, we have documents that just weren't cut and pasted correctly, we have the wrong, I think someone brought that up today, we have the wrong VIN numbers on document, you know, VIN number.
So I'm going to put that on as an agenda item for our next meeting. And if, at that point too, if we don't feel like it's rectified, the committee can make a motion at that point of giving like a deadline and, like whatever. So we will put that on for a future one, but again, today, we're just looking at the transfer of buses. So any other questions regarding the one in front of us, or if people feel like they're not able to vote on it because of the other things, you're more than welcome to vote no. But otherwise, we have the request in front of us for the, the three, so. Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I don't think we can note regarding, but we will.
I, had I said that exact word, so.
All right, so we've motioned to approve, do we have any other discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And as noted, I put a note for next meeting with a different topic, so we can follow up.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the next item.
I'll make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Questions regarding contracts or GCB employees?
I had a couple of questions, so this is the template that would be, that is proposed to be implemented for all current and future GCB employees?
That's true.
I have.
Not all, though, because some.
Well, the ones who don't currently have.
Well, right, the, right, right, yeah, the ones that don't, this is what we would give to the ones that don't have contracts.
And then the ones going forward, but.
Yeah, anyhow, different, yeah.
So I have, I, I have two concerns about things in the contract and then a question about implementation. So there's a portion in the contract that requires a hearing before termination. That, to me, for a non-union employee seems like a step that is.
Bless you.
Like Rhode Island is an at-will state, to have a hearing for a non-union employee seems excessive to me. The funding clause that basically says if the money goes away, so does your position, that to me seems to negate the whole point of having a contract. And then I'm wondering how we're going to roll these out to our current employees in terms of length and getting them signed.
So, do you want to answer the first two questions?
Sure, I mean, I, well, I mean, I, I, the initial charge was to come up with a, a contract for the GCB employees who didn't have contracts, they are currently at-will employees. So we drafted just an at-will contract. And then through discussion with the administration, the thought was that no one would sign an at-will contract and, and there should be some term of years. Once you put a term of years into the contract, it's no longer an at-will contract, now you have to have some sort of a due process mechanism as far as a termination goes. Which is why what I had put in there after talking to Dr. Duba was just sort of that level of termination, not cross-examination and witnesses. not cross-examination and witnesses, just, you know, the right to hear the charges against you, so to speak, and to respond to them. So, that's that, and then as we discussed briefly with the other one, on that funding piece, we're now suggesting that go into, into all the contracts, that has not been tested, um, I suppose someone could argue that sort of negates, but if it's funded, it's funded, and the, the argument is, well, if it's not funded, that becomes a just cause to terminate, we don't have the money anymore, especially with, like, we've got some clients that have completely grant-funded positions, and the grant money went away, but the person's sitting on a three-year contract.
Is that in our other contracts for the GCB employees?
Probably not, that's brand-new language that we just started, started talking about, so probably not.
So, would it go into all the other contracts?
I would suggest so, yeah.
Like, even existing contracts?
Well, you, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to roll it in as contract expire or get renewed.
So, what's in between a hearing and a no hearing, like, I, I-
Yeah, I, I think this, maybe it's the term hearing that's bothering you, we can change, I mean, you have the full-blown evidentiary hearing with lawyers and cross-examination and witnesses, we don't want that.
Right.
You have the no hearing, which is at-will, we don't like you, you're gone. That, that middle ground tends to be the, you get to come in as the employee, you get to hear what the superintendent's concerns with you are, you get a chance to respond, and that's it, there's no, there's, that's the due process you get, there's nothing more. That's what's envisioned with this contract, and we can cha- if the hearing pieces wa- is what's concerning, we can clarify that.
Yeah, I, I think, to me, when I hear hearing, I picture an evidentiary hearing, like, I, I mean, I, I think that is not something that, I, I mean, Rhode Island isn't at-will state, so.
We're making these employees not at-will, though, and when I just Googled it, like, that's the problem.
Yeah, once you give them a term of years, they're not at-will.
Yeah.
But I think we had not really talked through, like, we talked about contracts, and like, I think, like, that's where it gets really tricky, because it does say that if you have a employee that's not an at-will employee, that like, they do need that formal process of advance notice before hearing before termination.
Yeah, see, I, to me, that is, and again, I don't come from education land, but like, it's, you're creating a process where you're, and it has nothing to do with valuing employees, it's just you, you're creating a process where you're making it very difficult to get rid of people.
At-will is the easiest.
It, 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 it really is, um.
Other thoughts from the committee, questions?
But I'm happy if you decide to go with this, or this particular form, I'm, I'm happy to clean up the, 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 the due process language, if you will, but as you said, once you're, once you give a term of years, and you're outside of that at-will, now you've gotta have some sort of a due process, and you gotta have some sort of cause.
I mean, is it, is it something that can be like first warning, second warning, not even like verbal written, but like, you know, something like that?
You could, but they're gonna have to have enough opportunity to adjudicate each warning, essentially, right, I mean, it's just, you, you have to prove just cause at some point in time.
Okay.
Or they're at-will.
I guess my, my thought on this is, we're putting our contract together, why are we providing a contract if they're at-will employees?
Well, I didn't go for the contract.
No, it's not like, I just thought we have nothing signed that's even saying, even like, if you work in corporate America, you have an at-will, like, you still have to sign something saying, I'm agreeing to work with you, it doesn't even have to say, like, I, I don't know why we would have to have dates, it's just signing something, agreeing of employment.
You wouldn't, once you put the dates, that's when you, you-
That's what I mean, like, do we have to put the date, like, I think I was more, I thought we just needed to have something that you signed saying that kind of protects us, that you work for us, but you can't just do what you want.
Yeah, and I don't wanna speak for Dr. Duba, I think when that, when I first put that forward, his concern was, is that going to hamper his ability to get people in, when, basically, that's all it is, it's a, it's a written piece of paper that says you work for us, but we can fire you whenever we want.
Well, we don't even need to fire, we don't even need to fire you, we just don't fund your position. So, like-
That's me, that's me, this is-
This isn't achieving what we're trying to achieve, and I don't think-
What do you wanna achieve, I guess is my question, my thought was, you had people that were at-will employees with no written agreement at all, and the charge was, give them some form of written agreement, so there's an acknowledgement they work here, that's what I started with.
And they shouldn't have dates, and they should just be at-will.
I thought it would standardize the employment, uh, parameters in terms of benefits, and-
Well, we could have that with long-term-
I didn't do, I didn't do that, Jen, because we had, we had two groups, right, we had GCB employees who already had a contract, and then Megan, five or six employees who were GCB who had no contract. And those, you know, initially, my understanding was, those, we can't touch the other ones that have a contract for whatever the terms, but those five or six people that didn't have one, my understanding was, that's what the committee wanted to address, is get something in writing that at least acknowledges they work for us. What that looks like now is completely up, up to you folks, it can be at-will, which just simply says, you work here, your benefits are in, are what's in GCB, and by the way, you're an at-will employee. There is no term, it's not a year, it's not two years, it's just that, um, in which case you don't have the due process or the hearing concerns, or you can do something, you know, a bit of a hybrid, uh, here, which is, we'll give you a term of years, you still do have some just cause rights, but we're going to, you know, not make it into a federal case every time the superintendent makes a recommendation.
So, my question is about, you know, at-will, and like, here, you work here, like, what, is there any evaluation process, I mean, what if this person is just like-
For at-will?
Sit there, sits there and doesn't do their job properly, but, you know, and, you can just fire him?
At-will.
Yeah, and then-
Yeah, at-will, you can fire for any non-discriminatory reason. You were five minutes late today, Andrew.
You could say we could do better, right?
Yeah, lots of non-tennis stand, yeah.
And then in terms of, like, vacation times and stuff like that, because obviously, they're different.
That's all locked, though, because we, when we updated GCB, any employee that falls under GCB, we have outlined all of that, so not, regardless of contract, not contract, they're all protected under the GCB of what we had previously-
They get the benefits from the GCB, yep, yep.
Yeah, like, they get the benefits of anything that's in GCB, regardless of contract. So, is, any further discussion on this? Kind of how we want? I think we can do a motion to approve, we could request that the administration and the district attorneys, like, give us some other options, we could do many things, I heard concerns about the, like, the dates and the at-will part and the hearing part, and then also about the, um, salary part, I think, and-
The funding part.
Yeah.
Well, the other is, we just, we don't do a contract, we haven't had contracts for these nine employees. They are under the GCB policy, which gives them their benefits, and we continue doing what we're doing.
Could be put in the policy that they get a contract.
We did put it in the policy, so we'd have to take that out.
Yeah, we specifically added to approve it.
Yeah, so the committee approved the contract with, the committee approved that policy with the contract included in it, so I feel like we've already made the decision as a committee that we want contracts.
Yeah, that does.
I think where we need to rectify it is if we want this contract, or we want a different contract, like, if, like, you know, so I think, I don't wanna go backwards and say we're not doing contracts, the committee, unless the committee wants to, but like, we already kind of made that decision, I think it's determining what's in the contract, so.
Cause even now, like, did they sign something saying, oh, I read the GCB, you know what I mean, so they actually know?
Yes, they did.
I think it was a-
Yeah, we put that in the policy, yeah.
They did.
We did, but I mean, prior to that, like, they might not even have looked at the policy, right? Like, we might say-
I mean, the policy is given, when they're hired, they're given the policy, and that's explained to them what their benefits are.
But did they sign anything saying, I accepted it, or I-
I, I'm not sure they did, cause that's why we did, or did they, why did we do that now?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so I think that was one, too, we were just sort of like, there was no acknowledgement that they even-
Yeah, we, we brought that in, yeah, so now we have that acknowledgement that they've read and have get, been provided that policy, you put, we put that in the-
I think we have concerns with the language around the termination-
Hearing.
Piece about, well, I was gonna say the funding piece, so it's gonna be back to you where that is.
Take the funding piece out, I, I mean, I, I, quite frankly, put that in there to protect you guys, it just gives you something else to, to, to argue, in the event that you have a funded position, and you lose funding for some reason.
Well, and I would say then it would just be a, a one-year contract, or just keep the contract at-
That, that's, that's absolutely another option, just all one-year contracts, and if you terminate during that one-year period, you get that, we won't call it a hearing, we won't call that your day in front of the school committee, but everything's just a one-year contract, year to year, that's another option.
But like, don't most per- no, that's not real, I was gonna say, most are on probation for like, 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 you'd have to think about that probation language after one year, like, you know, you wouldn't want-
Yeah, 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 it's another one-year contract, you're on probation for another nine months, yep.
Yeah, exactly, which does happen in some places, like, when you get a new contract, you're on probation again, but.
I mean, to me, a one-year contract is worse than no contract, right, like, I mean, with no contract, the assumption is, like, we're keeping you, one-year contract is, you're up for-
And, and I think that's Dr. Duba's concern, from a practical point, I gotta, I wanna speak for you, but from a practical point of view, if you can go somewhere and get a two- or three-year contract, and here, you can only get a one-year contract, you're-
Probably go somewhere else.
How many other, we may have had this conversation last time, I, I don't remember, how many other districts have contractors for, have contracts for the same type of positions we're talking about, giving contracts to now?
We'd have to go back and, and look to see, I know that, I mean, I can say, the district I came from, everybody had a contract.
Everybody did.
Yeah.
Well, cause it kind of protects us, cause if there isn't one, yes, you can fire someone, but they can sue us.
Everyone had a contract, anyone that wasn't union had a contract.
How could they sue us?
If you get fired in wherever, like, you could sue, people like sue for number reasons, like wrongful termination, or saying they weren't supposed to, that's what I mean, like, this sort of protects the school department from that.
It, it's a good practice to have a written con- I mean, I think I've said that from, from day one, I'm not, that's my personal opinion, is we shouldn't be employing anyone without some form of a written agreement, whether it's at-will or a termed contract, I, I, that's just, that just makes sense.
Alright, so the contract that's put in front of us right now is not at-will, it has a beginning, it has dates, it would have dates in it, and it would have the person have a hearing, and it would be contingent on funding, so, I guess the question is, is the committee, like, it's just if three people are willing to approve this contract as is, or if we want to basically not approve, like, are we, what's the bottom line?
Yeah, I think you can, you can approve the contract as is, you can ask-
The contract draft, too.
Dr. Duba to go back and make it an at-will, make it a one-year, um, approve the contract with the term of years, except change the hearing language to make it more clear that it's not-
And this would be for the, this would be the contract for those that don't have one right now, because you have principals and directors that already have contracts.
Right, and you're gonna, essentially, you're gonna bring those six people in, seven people, whatever it is, offer them this contract, they, they say, no, we're gonna, I'm going to leave, in which case, that, that's, you know, their decision.
Do you, so Dr. D, do you think, just a plain at-will one, cause I get your one-year, that people wouldn't take it, but if it didn't have dates on it, but it still sort of said, you know, there would be ramifications if you want to get rid of them, like, there would be a process? I guess-
What's your question?
Like, were you against the at-will, and that's why you wanted the dates?
I was concerned with it just being at-will.
Okay.
Because, like I was like, if we already, they're, they're already working for us that are at-will, now we're writing a contract that says at-will, why do we need the contract?
Just to protect us, cause we're not protected with no contract.
That was, that was kind of my thought, um, I think now, if we're concerned with the language we put in there, that if it's a two-year contract, but if there's a lack of funding, we're gonna have to go, then I would-
It's actually worse to me than-
An at-will.
Yeah, like, cause like, basically-
At-will, you always know that.
You're not firing them, right, so you, they, it, you don't need just cause, but like, we're not funding your position, you're out, like, that to me has less protection for, like, why have dates in a contract if you're, every year, the school committee has the autonomy to not fund a position?
Where at-will, it's kind of assumed that way.
So, I-
Could also limit that language to just grant funds, if you wanted to, or federal funds, but that, again, it's really, you can really do, it, it's really up to you folks.
No, and I get like the, I get the concept, right, there's only so many employees in this district that you have flexibility with, right, because the, all of the employees that are in the union and different things, if funding disappears for those union folks, like, you don't have autonomy to, to adjust anything, and so there's very few-
The funding is, the funding is new language, and that, and again, it wasn't even specific to you guys, we had a number of clients who had, like I said, employees on three-year contracts that were in the first year of their contract, and the grant funding-
And there's some money, yeah.
Well, the federal funding didn't show up, and I kept getting questions, well, what do I do with this person? They, they have a three-year contract, you gotta, you have to find something to do with them.
So, you added the funding part because we were gonna put the, like, one or two or three-year contract, but if we just put at-will, you would, you would not need that?
Don't need it.
Alright, so-
I mean, I didn't go back and just have it be an at-will contract, that's what we got.
Just to get a sense.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I just, like I said, I, I, I can do whatever.
Alright, so let's do, let's do this, at, without, just, are there any committee members that are interested in approving the contract draft as presented? No, okay, so, we're not doing that, so, what direction do we want to give, like, do people want to say, I would approve this if, or like, I support why, cause I don't want them to go do, work on this, and then have to come back and like, it's not what we're vibing on, cause like-
Would you approve, if we, if we changed to an at-will contract, would you approve that?
Yes.
So, then we just did that, we changed to that one.
Alright. Good talk. Um, okay, so, are we proposing to approve it tonight?
Uh, I'd rather have them bring it back, which I, I think is fine.
I would, I would like that.
It, it, we don't have a contract now, so it's another couple of weeks, it's, you guys be able to put your eyes on it and make sure it's what you want.
We just don't have a contract to approve.
Okay. Um, alright, moving on to item E.
E, make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, um, so we have some things presented from Dr. Duba, questions from the committee?
Do you want me to explain?
Yeah, can you walk this through?
Be happy to. Okay. So, what I provided to you is my recommendation to restructure the Director of Facilities and School Safety position to a Director of Operations. My reasoning for that is that after the past few months of us not having a permanent, or a, a facilities, a person in that position, um, and relooking at the structuring of our administrative department, and feedback from some of the school committee members about kind of looking at how, work is delegated, supervision of departments are delegated, um, I know from the previous year when I recommended, um, eliminating the Chief Operator, Chief Operations Officer position, I said that, didn't feel like we needed a position like that, that was a high-level position that I did not believe we needed, um, I did some restructuring, where the, the Transportation Department and Facilities Department fell under the Superintendent, the IT Department came under the Assistant Superintendent, and the Child Nutrition's Department went under the, um, Finance Department, made those changes. Throughout the year, and most recently, earlier, um, this, this year as well, there were some concerns that some of you had raised about how that work was being done, needing to, you know, maybe delegate more, so I can provide more attention to the role of, of Superintendent, um, I relooked at that, and I didn't agree that we needed to add another Assistant Superintendent, or add a COO, but looked at our director level, and that's where I basis on, looking at who we have as far as directors, um, and what those positions do. We have an opening now for a Director of Facilities and School Safety, um, it was filled, that person, um, has since resigned, um, I looked at that and restructured that position to be a Director of Operations, no, that position does not have an impact to the budget, it's the same salary, it is at a director level, not a Assistant Superintendent or COO level. That person, that, well, you said, that position would be responsible overall, high-level, for the facilities and school safety, um, the capital improvements for the district, and point person as, uh, with private school building authority with the work that's happening. They would oversee the Transportation Department and the Child Nutrition, Nutrition Services Department as well. In putting that position together, that would be more kind of high-level oversight of the facilities, kind of, they picture capital improvement. That would take the oversight of transportation and food services away, uh, transportation and facilities away from me, of what I was doing, um, provide more time for stewardship planning and education and all of superintendent duties, um, in putting that position together. In putting that position together, it would help with efficiencies and overall leadership of those other departments as well. I also provided to you a restructuring chart to know, like, what that would look like as far as the departments that we have and who's reporting to who. So, it does move three of the departments to go under the Director of Operations versus it being under myself and Finance. I provided you a chart to show the administrative FTE comparisons over the past three years. And you can see, the way that I have restructured our department since I've been here, it's, there is no addition to the administrators. In FY twenty-five, when you look at district administrators, building administrators, and the district administrative staff that we had, we had a total of forty-one. In FY twenty-six, with the changes that we had made, and I noted that there for you. So, in FY twenty-five, there was an addition of a non-certified position, and that was the Equity School Belonging and Engaging Position. It never got filled. In FY twenty-six, we added the School Committee Clerk position, which was a point-seven. That was added to the district administrative staff. In addition to that year, we eliminated the COO position. And I reorganized IT to have that covered. We had an IT Staff Manager. I changed that position to an IT Supervisor. So, that was a one-to-one. So, we eliminated the COO, and we, I restructured the IT Staff Manager to be the IT Supervisor. We didn't replace the IT Staff Manager. So, that was, that, that position moved from non-certified to certified. So, when you look at the difference of district administrators from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six, the number stayed the same. When you look at the district administrator staff, it went by, down by one, because I get, we eliminated the IT Staff Manager, which was in that category, and we put an IT Supervisor, and that went into the district administrators. We also eliminated the COO at that time. The Senior Technician Position, just to note, in error, was categorized as a non-certified position. It was actually ESP. So, that, kind of like, that position there, just to note, when we, I did the presentation that year, we had, we had that in that category. There was actually ESP, so it was counted twice in there. So, that's, that's why there's, it also changes with the, the negative, where that goes down. In FY twenty-seven, which will be this year coming up, I'm proposing that we take, we restructure the Director of Facilities and School Safety to a Director of Operations position. So, your district administrator, when you look at that, that's the change there. But my recommendation is to add a Supervisor of Facilities, because you need someone to do the day-to-day. If the Director of Operations is being high-level and overseeing the other departments, someone needs to be doing the day-to-day. And so, when you look at the difference of FTEs, we're actually, we went from forty-one to forty-point-seven to forty-one-point-seven. So, all of that was kind of like in that restructuring. So, the Supervisor of Facilities would be an addition from the previous year. But, but still, when you look at the number of FTEs across, is similar to FY twenty-five. In addition to the school committee that we have. The budgetary impact for the Director of Operations would be no impact. It's the same salary as the Facilities Director. The financial impact would be on the addition of the Supervisor of Facilities that we would put in. My recommendation, what I put in the letter, is that that is added to the FY twenty-seven budget. Not right now. And just here's my reasoning why, if we agree to that. We hire the Director of Operations. Right now, that position, if it's approved tonight, we post this week. We post it, we do interviews, we get someone to come in. Probably not at this rate with thinking of time period between now and the end of the year. Bringing someone in, probably not gonna start until the, either the end of this year or the beginning of the next calendar year. I would like to see if we have someone in our maintenance department to be able to move up into a supervisory role. I like the idea of being able to hire from within, if we have the people that are there, if people are willing and have the expertise to do so. The Director of Operations could evaluate that when that person's brought on board, evaluate the maintenance staff, evaluate to see if that is something that is possible. And then we would post for the Supervisor of Facilities to take on that role. I'd recommend, just budgetarily, put it into the FY twenty-seven budget. I know there'll be questions, what do you do from January until June? Leslie and I are looking at the budget to see where are we right now? Would we, because of positions not being filled, have enough to, for a prorated salary to put a Supervisor of Facilities in come this way? If that was possible, instead of waiting until FY twenty-seven, if the funding is there and is available.
I'm sorry, I was with you for the whole ride, except to the very end. Can you say that last part again?
Yes, so what I was saying, Leslie and I were also looking at the budget to determine if we had enough funding in the budget this year, right? Based on staffing positions not filled, right? Would we be able to fund a prorated salary of a Supervisor of Facilities to come in in the, like, the winter-spring time?
Yep.
Once the Director of Operations spends some time and just kind of analyzing that department and the needs in that department.
Okay.
And that we, there is someone doing the day-to-day.
So, your goal would be, if funding was available in FY twenty-six, to fill it? But if not, fill it in FY twenty-seven?
And so, that impacts, put that in there as far as a fiscal impact as well. Looking at the supervisory positions that we, we have currently in our school department, we would put that sal- that salary would be at eighty thousand for a Supervisor of Facilities, which aligns with, and kind of looking at what our other Supervisors are, have for a salary.
So, it says eighty thousand plus travel expenses, is that correct?
For travel, because the Supervisor of Facilities would be driving from school to school. So, we would discuss, negotiate what that would be.
And not drive a district vehicle?
We don't have that. We tried putting that in the budget last year to buy another vehicle. But we don't have a district vehicle yet.
We have some, though. I see them driving them around.
So, we, we do have some, but it wasn't where, like, we had someone, like, our facility, Director of Facilities have been driving around vehicles.
Understood, got you. Okay, questions regarding Dr. Duba's proposal? Because the biggest thing that the committee needs to approve this evening is the change in title, correct?
Right, and I.
Because you'd like to post that position there that you go.
I would have to post it soon so we can start looking, and I provided you the job descriptions of the Director of Operations and the Supervisor of Facilities.
And so, just to clarify for myself and, and the committee, tonight, all, all we're being asked to do is to approve the Director of Operations change. Are you also asking us to approve the Supervisor of Facilities, or is that just FYI?
What I, what, if, if we put in a Director of Operations, we would need to put in a Supervisor of Facilities.
Well, you don't think the Director of Operations could oversee? Because I feel like the Supervisor of Child Nutrition's, she has very strong leadership. I think Transportation does not have strong leadership. Where I think if they did, I think the Director of Operations, like, what if you paid them a little bit more, and then they could oversee everything, versus adding another position for eighty thousand dollars? I really think there's educational positions that we really need to add, after seeing our RIC scores. I think we're missing helping kids who need help with math and ELA. So, I don't think adding more administrative is helping us that way, which should be our top priority.
I, I understand where you're coming from, but when we had this discussion the other day, I hadn't thought about this. It's technically not a COO position that you're adding back, but you were comparing it to, like, in the past, what the district has had, with the CFO or, or the woman in charge, the CEO, technically the COO. But it also, she was the Director of Finance and the HR Director.
No, she was not the HR Director.
At some.
Nope, so there was an HR Supervisor, but also what happened during that time, we cut positions in Finance. So, when she was the, when we had a CFO, there was no Finance Director, but they had two controllers. When they got rid of the CFO position, they added a COO, because the person that went in COO didn't have a finance background, and they eliminated a controller position, and they hired a director. So, right now, that department is down people.
Right, which, so you would like, and you would like a controller.
Well, I, we have a controller. What I had brought up last time is that they actually need assistance in there, not, may not be like a controller level, but someone within that department, because there's additional work that's happening minus people in that department.
So, I guess, Ken, my question to you would be, if the committee's not a hundred percent on the Supervisor of Facilities, would you still want to make the change to Director of Operations, regardless of having that or not?
And I, what I would say is that during that time, we evaluate how that job is getting done and will we be efficient.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be to have the committee approve or not approve the Director of Operations concept. And then, I think we have more time, especially once that person comes in to talk about the Supervisor of Facilities job, how we want to do, what we want to do for next year's budget, needs, et cetera. Because I think if you're comfortable with moving forward with the Director of Operations regardless, then that's really the big question right now, is helping fill someone in that role. So, we can go whatever direction you want, but that would be my recommendation, is that we, we don't have to commit to the whole package, although I do appreciate Dr. Duba putting it forward. I think the most important thing right now is getting some help in the facilities area. And, you know, I'm comfortable, and I actually like the concept of the Director of Operations, because I think it's good to have some oversight in the Transportation and Nutrition Services areas that's not Dr. Duba. So, that would be my, my recommendation, is that we don't, we don't have to say yes to everything right now. We could just move forward with the Director of Operations.
I just want to comment on Sherri's comment. I don't disagree with you that we need to focus on instruction. I think it's very important that we continue that focus, and we're making sure that we have positions there. And I really kind of thought about that from the comments you provided to me. And I thought over the past two years since I've been here, and we really defended all of the grant positions that we had that were either intervention positions or specialists, that are teaching positions, supporting kids. And when the grant funding ended, we rolled all of that into the budget, and we made sure we kept those positions going. So, we made sure that that focus was there, and that focus needs to continue being there. And I don't disagree with you that we need to make sure that we continue to focus on that. We also need to make sure that at a district level, we are running and operating efficiently, so our schools are getting what they need, and we're continuing to have high, high achieving schools as well, and high performing, and we need to make sure at all levels that we are properly staffed.
Is there any opportunity, Ken, and I don't know the answer to this, to shift one of the maintenance lines? Like, so maybe from, like, six maintenance lines to five? And then reallocate some of that funding?
Meaning the number of maintenance workers we have?
Yeah.
We could, that's, that's pretty much why I wanted, like, I want to get someone in the position so they can really work with their, with, work with the Facilities Department to determine what the needs are there. I don't want to just cut a maintenance position to make it a Supervisor position, that we do have the, the day-and-a-night lead maintenance worker. But I just want to make sure that we are.
And I'm not talking about cutting people, but like, like, long-term, like, shifting roles or elevating roles or something? Like, I'm not talking about, like, eliminating human jobs, if that's what you're there.
Right, I just want to make sure that, like, so if we were to say, like, maintenance person moves into a Supervisor role, are they also then doing some of the day-to-day maintenance work as well? So, we're not losing the number of workers we have, right? So, I want to make sure we can evaluate. Is that what you're saying? I'm sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, I was just saying, like, to try to help, like, honor what Sherri was saying and different things about the impact for the, the eighty grand that we have to come up with. Like, there's some salary money in those six maintenance folks. If somebody got elevated or something, you just don't replace their position, and then you can shift money, kind of like what you did with the IT Department restructuring. It was more just like a conceptual idea versus having to come up with another eighty grand.
Yeah, or maybe even like, all those maintenance people, like, could they help do a little more, you know, than they're currently doing? Obviously, we'd want to pay them a little bit more, but to take on a bigger role? Like, they're in the building every day, so they probably notice things more than even a Supervisor would that would need to be done.
And part of what I said earlier, that having the Director of Operations step in, right? To evaluate and have that personally look at what the needs are, before we were to hire the Supervisor. I was just saying, like, if we said the funding was available, if we need to do that sooner, in FY twenty-seven, we could look into that.
Yeah, something I would, like, ask you to look into about the maintenance stuff, because I do remember there was a conversation with our former Director of Facilities two ones ago, who had mentioned about, with the CIP projects, hoping to do as much in-house as we possibly could. So, my concern is getting rid of a whole maintenance staff member. You know, what, what would, what impact would that make on the district? So, you know, these are just things to consider. And, and I do appreciate the thought you put into the reorganization, the, the beginning of these talks, because obviously, they have to do with FY twenty-seven. But I, going forward, where it would help me a lot to look into these decisions and figure out, you know, what I think about them is, your recommendations, it seems like there are so many priorities, and understandably, right? We have a lot of different ways we're being pulled to try to best serve everyone in our district. And it would be really good if you could give us just a very solid idea of what your priorities are, because, for instance, that October letter and the statement was, you know, the controller in Transportation. And then I know that obviously, things happened, and by the end, you know, within a month, things have changed. But, you know, I'm just trying to process all this now, and obviously, we're only making one decision tonight. But I, I think we have to be very thoughtful about this, all of us, including the school committee. When you bring this stuff to us, to me, I don't want to make a, just a quick decision. I want to think about, when you're talking about restructuring, I don't want this to be like a Tetris game, where we're restructuring every six months or every budget cycle. Because, and, and, you know, the charts, or, if they could be apples to apples versus, you know, four pages versus one, that kind of thing, that would be really helpful as well. So, these are all just.
Yeah, so with that, I just did the change to cover sheet, because that was really where those changes fell in place. That's why I didn't go and, and change every other page of this.
Yeah, and I know a lot of this is FY twenty-seven talk, which we're not going to get to. But just to let you know, if you do want us to make a decision sooner rather than later, it would just be helpful to know what your priorities are. Any other discussion on this, or?
I want to thank you for hearing the concerns about the number of people reporting directly into you and doing some creative thinking on a way to find a way to alleviate that. And I agree that waiting until you have a person in place to make a decision about what to do with the Supervisor of Facilities is, is the way to go, because I think it makes sense, not only to have the person who fills that role to pick the person, but once they get in and they get familiar with the position, they see what the need is, and maybe there is a creative way or another way to fill that, rather than hiring somebody. So, I would support, like, filling that Director of Operations role now, and then making a decision on the Super Facilities position down the road once they've had a chance to get in and, and see what works. But I really appreciate you hearing the concerns about the number of direct reports coming into you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I think we're in a motion to discuss right now, so we would need a motion to approve. Someone wanted to present one for the Director of Operations change.
I'll make a motion to approve the Director of Operations position.
Sorry, can I just ask one more quick question? The day-to-day operations.
Hold on one second, I can, sorry, can we just get a second, and then we can start back in discussion? So, we have a motion a second, and then we can have a re-open discussion. Go ahead.
So, the, who would be doing the day-to-day operations, then? Would it be this Director of Operations until we filled?
Okay. Alright, that's all. Any other questions? Okay, here, now we'll call the question. So, this would be to change the Director of Facilities and School Safety position to the Director of Operations position. Allison Piver, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna call for a quick five-minute recess. Okay, allison Piver, please say aye.
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 So we'll come back from our recess. We'll move on to item F. Can I get a motion table?
Make a motion to the table.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then G.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So we have to do...
Oh, no. Make a motion to discuss.
Yeah.
We've got to change the contract.
Yep. Okay, so a motion to discuss?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, and so this is the position for the coordinator position, but because of the conversation that we had earlier regarding the GCB contracts, we just need to make a motion to appoint, but the contract that was attached in the agenda is not... That won't be going forward because you... We didn't move forward the contract template. And so this is just a... To approve Dr. Duvva's appointment, and then the contract piece will come later, just like any of the other non-contracted GCB employees. If that makes sense.
Yep, let me make a motion to appoint.
So don't we need to have an agreement or contract before we can hire someone?
No, because they... Hold on one second. So we have a motion to appoint. Let's just get a second, then I'll leave it to discuss.
Second.
Sherry? Okay. Sherry, go ahead with your question.
Well, don't we need to have an agreement or a contract to hire someone? Under those type of positions?
The superintendent can appoint. If the school committee approves the appointment, again, you have a bunch of GCB people right now who don't have contracts. This position would just fold into... Assuming that it passes, this position would fold into that group of people who are going to get this new GCB... It sounds like at-will contract.
But didn't we say in the GCB policy that we need to hire people with...
Right.
Contracts? But we don't actually have a contract approved, which makes me think we can't hire anyone. Yeah.
You have the G... You have the at-will contract. You'll have the at-will contract. She'll be appointed and subject to the contract being approved with the regular GCB. You have... I mean, we haven't let go of the six or seven other people that don't have GCB contracts. The policy...
Well, yeah, but they were grandfathered in.
There's no grandfathering.
Well, I mean, like, the policy that they were here was different, and then the policy changed.
From a legal perspective, I think you could approve the... If that's what you want to do, you could approve the appointment subject to the at-will contract to be drafted.
Other questions?
As is the other GCB employees. Or you can turn it down.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I'm going to be opposing this funding of this position and for the following reasons. RICAS scores dictate that we need to invest more in helping our children recover from learning loss. Filling and maintaining academic and educational positions should be our first priority. With the changes coming from the federal level, we have had to restructure and should be focusing our priorities on what positions we may now have to absorb into our operating budget if and when grant funding runs out. Dr. Duvva also talked about a supervisor facilities position, which may or may not need to be funded for the remainder of this year, and he would need to find money for that funding. This could be one of the ways he finds money for someone to run our day-to-day operations in our facilities that are so desperately needed. Our buildings, and this is coming from... I am the... One of the chairs of the building subcommittee. Our buildings, especially our elementary schools, are in need of millions of dollars worth of work. We've had to go out to bond just to focus on the middle schools, and will most likely need another bond for the elementary schools' work. I cannot justify supporting low priorities over this and then turning around and asking residents for more money. When we had a COO, she also acted as the CFO. Now the proposal is for a separate position of the supervisor so that we can have a director of operations. Dr. Duvva's priorities from October included a controller and help in the transportation department, which the director of operations would help a little bit, but he still asked for a controller, which he considers a priority, as do I. Also, Representative Magaziner's proposal to raise teacher salary minimum to $60,000 is something that should be on our radar. Per... A response to an email that I sent out, "We are the only district in the state of Rhode Island with this position, and therefore no other comps have been sent out other than just to consider it the comp... The salary comparable to a supervisory position." I have actually never received an answer to exactly what our priority equi... Prior equity belonging and community engagement coordinator accomplished while she was here in terms of data and justification for continuing this position. And if that can't be answered, I'm not sure how this gets justified as one of our top priorities or even a major priority in our district. Many of the responsibilities, if you read the job description, are duties that actually should and are already being handled by our existing staff. For instance, ensuring diverse hires, that would be HR and Dr. Duvva. Responsibility of looking through curriculum, we have a director of curriculum, we have a super... An assistant superintendent. We have people... We have a policy subcommittee, policy advisory committee, and Dr. Duvva, who deal with policies. And I could go on and on, but the job description's right here. Also, there's a lot of stuff on here that the health and wellness committee already does, and so I'm not exactly really sure why we need a separate position for this. I also believe that... I personally would have liked to have seen this funding go towards the Title I grant funding position and McKinney-Vento and OFL positions that are being kind of disappearing as a result of the lack of grant funding. And with all that's going on in our federal government, I think that we need to be very careful about what we're doing and what positions we are looking towards. And I... Let me see. I just... To just finish up, I was just wondering, Dr. Duvva, do you think that this position, while you do recommend it, is necessarily a top priority for our district?
I would say if I had to rate positions in priority, it would not be the number-one position. Not saying it's not needed, but it's not the number-one position.
Okay, thank you. So for all of those reasons, I will not be voting in favor of funding this position. I think that we have many other priorities that we really need to look at that would be beneficial to the entire district, students, staff, and our residents. Thank you.
And I feel the same way. I honestly... I know we had funding, but I can tell you firsthand that I think there's kids in the middle who are needing extra math support that are not getting it. And instead, it's current teachers who are having them go to PLT for help almost every day, and that shouldn't be happening. And so I feel like if we further look into it, and I know I'm having... I asked Rob to look into it, I think we're missing kids or just not getting extra help that they need. And they might have been getting it in elementary school, but then they're not getting it in middle school, and I really think that's the gap of why our RICAS numbers are going down. So I just feel like this is money that we could use towards that, or also, like you said, we need end-up me as supervisor facilities or paying a little extra towards the director of operations, so we don't actually need other positions and we get a strong person. So I think we need to put education first in our students.
Okay, any other further discussion? I am going to support the appointment. I obviously supported it during Buzz at season two, but I do always think about it when it comes through, and I do think, to agree with you, Sherry, that I think a lot of the data has been showing us that there is need for students, and a lot of it is disproportionate and connected to things like things that this position are focused on.
It's not, because I will tell you, I know firsthand, it's not. There's just kids who are kind of in the middle, who don't get the extra help that they need unless they ask, and they don't ask. They don't say, "Oh, could I go into math support?" They don't know to do that, or they don't know to... They're not going to go home and tell their parents, "Oh, my star score wasn't great. Can I get extra help?" And it is not kids that are in what you're talking about. There's just... It's in general all kids. Well, I don't know what you're saying. Like, I don't think the equity belonging community engagement coordinator is gonna... I don't know why the person prior didn't actually find this out. So that's why I kind of think what Megan's saying is, we don't have any proof that this position is doing what it's supposed to.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of approving Dr. Duvva's appointment, please say aye.
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 Okay, opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Dr. Duvva, do you want to give any?
Yeah, I'll read that memo that we submitted. I'm pleased to recommend Mrs. Allison Nissinzi for appointment as the equity belonging and community engagement coordinator. Mrs. Nissinzi brings more than 13 years of experience in educational leadership, program development, and community partnerships. Most recently, she served as an assistant principal at Metcalf Elementary School. She has dedicated her career to advancing equity, fostering inclusive environments, and building strong connections among students, residents, and staff. As an academic administrator, she led initiatives to close opportunity and achievement gaps, design professional development, and implemented wellness and leadership programs that increased student engagement and staff satisfaction. Allison is excited to bring these strengths to NK to support both student and staff belonging while deepening community engagement. I recommend Mrs. Nissinzi for this position and look forward to working with her and positive impacts that she'll bring to our district. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much. And so that brings us to correspondence, and then we'll go back into executive.
November 4th, Robert Jones, agenda item goals. November 5th, Diane Hill, school building advisory committee testimony. November 6th, Crystal Simas, questions regarding school safety in the Abby's Warner case. November 12th, Lee Wilson, apple response.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to go back into executive, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.